November 28th, I'd ask everyone in attendance to join and join us in Singing Oh Canada.
(Music) (Music)
Thank you to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the vocals and to the National Film Board of Canada for the video of our country. So I would call the meeting to order and we begin with the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor Monroe?
Thanks Mayor Given. I'll move that the minutes of the city council meeting held November 14th, 2011 be adopted.
Thanks very much councillor Monroe. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks Mayor Given. I move council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much councillor Crokin. Any notes on the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our meeting. This is an opportunity where anyone in the community can come forward to address council on any community-related matter. We did have one person that let us know in advance that they'd like to attend. Ms. Cochran, if you'd like to come forward and join us at the mic, you can introduce yourself and make yourself welcome.
Sure. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jen Cochran. I apologize, mics make me nervous, so... Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Perfect, okay. I'm stopping by because of the recent parking ban by law on our street in particular, 123rd Avenue. I appreciate the effort being made to remove snow. Unfortunately, the 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. is really negatively impacting our particular neighborhood. I sent a letter earlier, you should all have had a chance to see it. I can highlight some of the points, so those of you who didn't do your homework can go, "Okay, got it." They are essentially, that particular stretch of road is on the bus route. So that's the issue with having the parking ban in front. But the alley behind the house is exceptionally narrow. I've also attached the satellite images. My particular house, I have a one-vehicle driveway. And I have two vehicles, because my husband and myself both work. Now, he is in oil field, so he works 13 and 3 and occasionally comes home in those 13. So for the most part, we've been able to satisfy that seven days without being able to park Monday through Friday, which is, I think, an exceptionally long stretch of time considering we had snow the one Friday and then didn't have another major dump for the next seven days. My neighbor who moved in directly beside me on the one side, she moved in two months ago to that residence, and there's no driveway on her property. The previous owners had a garden, and she has nowhere to park. On the other side of me, there's home care that needs to go to that residence for a woman who's had a heart attack a year ago, and her home care has nowhere to park. A few houses down, there was another homeowner, and in her tenant agreement, in her lease, she's got it signed that she's required to park in front because they use the back parking for their motor homes and whatnot. If I go through, I'll just read a couple of the notes I have. Also, we had a real estate agent. He raised concerns that he couldn't bring people to certain houses on that street because that would involve parking between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00 p.m., which, again, wouldn't accommodate his needs. Let's see, where am I? When I first moved into that house, I moved in five years ago, and when I first moved in, I called the city and I requested a driveway be put in the front of my property because I had a daughter who was just learning to walk and liked to run towards the street. And with my husband away and carrying groceries, trying to herd her, and I just thought it would be nice. And the response to me was that the city required parking in front of our homes, and it was too densely housed together for us to be able to put driveways in front. And so they needed that area for us to park. And now that is essentially been removed for the months of November through April, I believe, is what the sign says that were put up last month. If I go through, when I phoned Transportation, I had touched base when the signs were first put up a month ago, and they said, you know, "If that actually, if any of these things are genuine concerns, you know, feel free to call back in a month." So of course I did call back last week. And I left a message with Robert, but I suspect he's got a few phone calls. He has not had the opportunity to phone me back at this point. So I guess I'm here tonight to essentially let you know that it's a really large concern for us. We don't want to be penalized for going home. Some concerns about picking up friends or having company come visit us, you know. It was suggested to one individual that they pick up their company at Shopper's Drug Mart and bring them to their house, and then go and return them to Shopper's. We pay taxes, as everybody else does, and we would like to be able to park at our houses, essentially, is the bottom line. The bus doesn't park in front of our houses ever. It's on the other side of the road. And so we've always made effort, and I think we've succeeded in that particular row of homes in getting out of the way as soon as we see the plow truck. Since I did send this letter, I've noticed at 6:59 and 7:00 a.m. that plow is right outside my door circling the block, and I wonder if it's just checking to see if I parked out front, and maybe, maybe not, right? But I also, the other thing I did attach was the pictures of the alley from last winter. I'm sure everyone in Grand Prairie can appreciate that when the snow falls here on a big dump, it really does snow. When I parked in the alley for the plow that particular weekend, my husband was in the driveway, so I plugged in and I parked right tight to the fence. And the snowplow came through, but he hadn't been in a month, so when he did come through, he left. It was over a foot deep, I shoveled the car out, but I was still on a mound. So when I drove off of that, the bumper of my car snapped and popped a giant chunk, which is now in my kitchen cupboard that I keep in case I want to glue it on later. But it's not really a practical location unless I've got maybe, you know, a lift kit on my little station wagon. So it's a concern, and I'm just hoping that, you know, by touching base and... And there was also, I talked to many of my neighbors, not all of them, but the ones I did talk to, I've got, what did it say here? Within an area of 15 homes, I have obtained 16 signatures requesting that we have some sort of amendment here. I mean, I would think even the hours of 9:00 to 5:00, I would have an opportunity to meet the needs of the city and still not create a situation where we're creating problems. I'm just, I guess, really requesting middle ground because it's not working. And hopefully, I've brought that light to some of those scenarios.
Okay, thanks very much Jen.
Yep, thank you.
So we may have some questions for you from council members?
Absolutely.
Just a question for you. So this has just been up in your neighborhood for the last month, the signs and the parking bans?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Councillor Rice?
I'm somewhat...
Sorry, can I... Oh, sorry.
Somewhat confused. I thought the parking bans were going to go up. We had a big snow. So the parking bans would go up in three or four days, the snow would be cleared, the parking bans would be off. And yet, I'm hearing you say they've been up for a month?
No, seven days.
Seven days?
They were from Friday, the 18th, through to last Friday at 3:00.
And then they went away?
Yes, and that doesn't include Saturday and Sunday. We're allowed to park at home on Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, so it's only when we get a big snow and they have to clear the street that the bans will be up?
Well, that was my understanding, but the big snow was one Friday, and seven days later is quite a bit of time between a big snow.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? I see councillor Rice, do you have a...
Again, in her letter, she says that this one lady has a lease that requires she park in front of her home. Like, I don't think someone can rent a house and say, "You have to use the city street." Like, that would be like renting the city street, so...
Councillor Gustafson?
Thanks Mayor Given. Has anybody been issued any warnings or fines in your neighborhood at all?
To be honest, I've heard from neighbors that some of our neighbors have been ticketed. I haven't spoken to those individuals personally. Perhaps Public Works would know more. I'm not sure.
Okay, councillor Gustafson, do you have anything further?
Not right now, thanks.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you Mayor Given. Jen, this problem's been going on for quite a few years when development, early 90s, decided let developers maybe build smaller lots and put the houses all together, not realizing it costs the city more money to maintain it down the road. And for fire safety, and you've seen the problems. But I think some of the roots, not just yours and Pinnacle, but over Mission Estates, where they have a parking, and there might be a difference of a few hours, they still got to deal because it's so small. When you park all the vehicles there, it really squeezes it up quite a bit. And is your back alley greater to do that quite well? Because like, some of these new subdivisions like this, they make a four-foot side yard variance. So you've got eight feet, but if you do your overhang, you've got four feet from house to house. That's how tight they are now. Do they grade your back alley? Because they let some of these go, but I hear the back alley, forget it, a lot of times.
This year, yes. I bought that house five years ago, and it was one of 14 homes for sale when I purchased. So it wasn't prime picking. And that particular winter, there was about six neighbors that abandoned their vehicles and went to work. And when they got home, their vehicles had been taken by tow trucks, I suppose, to impound at some point during the day because they had to leave them in the alley. They were trapped with that snowfall. It was '05, '06. It was that big, big...
Big one.
Yeah.
Well, I can see, and you were saying like, even a couple hours difference, especially on the bus route. Like, there's other areas, but you're on the bus route, and there's a few like that with homes very close together.
Right.
Maybe something could be looked at, maybe.
Right, I would thank you, and I appreciate your point, yeah. That's aha Kelly. Like I say, my bumper was broken trying to use it right.
Councillor Wong?
Thank you Mayor Given. I'm right over here.
Oh, thank you. You guys need lights?
Yeah. Do you know if there's, if every home along that stretch has a couple of parking stalls in the back?
I can say that there's a couple that do, but just certainly not all of us. There's, mine's one, my neighbor's none, and there's many with just one.
Okay. Well councillor McLean's right, that it's hard to correct, you know, sins of the past. You know, these areas that were allowed to develop back in the day, and now it's really difficult to work around some of these situations now because we do want to have the snow routes in place to get things, or get that snow removal done quickly. I guess I would have to ask you if you would be willing, and maybe some of your neighbors as well, to come at the end of the season to have another discussion? I think we should all try to make this work this year and see what happens, and then express these concerns, and then review it at the end of the season. And if it turns out that we need to shorten the hours or need to do something else, that we would at least have everyone providing their best effort for one season?
To that, I would say, my one neighbor who doesn't have a driveway at all would end up with a ticket because she has nowhere to park. Myself, I could be in that boat as well if the alley is in the situation it has been in every other year, and my husband is home because there's nowhere else for me to park. It's not really realistic that I leave my car at the mall overnight so that I... And my daughter is seven years old, so I like to have her in bed before 9:00 at night. It's not very realistic with those hours to assume that I'm not going to be penalized. And I mean, if I have to pay a fine, I have to pay it, but it's unfortunate that I would have to pay it.
Okay, we've had several meetings on this. Have you or any of your neighbors been able to attend any of those meetings in the last couple of years?
To be honest, I'm not particularly familiar with your meetings, and it's more painted into a corner in a matter of necessity that I've figured out how to get here tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any further questions? I guess I would, oh, I see councillor McLean?
Thank you Mayor Given. Jen, no, it's very important to come forward because I remember countryside south where I live, and we had over 100 people in here at one time. A developer bought it, but then he did make routes even smaller than we, and we had 100 people. So it's important to have input because hopefully we can change things from the past.
Right, and when I did talk to my neighbors, nobody had a really solid understanding of the necessary steps to move forward. They all were very concerned, which is why they all put their names to the paper. And they definitely wanted to have things changed, but weren't sure of the means to do that, which is understandable with the most families having two people working full-time.
Thanks Jen.
Yeah, thank you.
And I see another one here. Councillor Crokin?
Thanks. Thanks Mayor Given. Thanks Jen. On that particular site, I don't believe there's any driveways at all in the front, is there?
No, we were told that we had to not put driveways in because of the parking that was going to be... Parallel parking was a necessity five years ago. Somehow it's changed.
I think, and I'm not one of the developers, but I think Public, our director could probably straighten us out on that. So if you believe there is two parking stalls in the back of each of those, that would be, unless they didn't do it, I was sure that would be a development requirement to have two parking stalls in the back.
Okay.
But just by the picture here, it looks like there is, but...
The pictures...
With sheds and things, it...
No, it's one driveway, I assure you. I park there daily.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, Ms. Cochran? Seeing none, I would say thanks very much for attending. Thanks for presenting your concern. The parking bans, the city tried them, started them in a limited amount last year. And so you're one of the new neighborhoods that's getting them. And council has to obviously balance off the concerns of all the people that send us emails, make phone calls, and catch us in the streets and say, "I want the snow off my road," with the people who need somewhere to park. And so we certainly are looking for feedback. This is going to be very helpful for us when we review the parking bans. And just for your information, when council did institute them in the first administration, had recommended a longer amount of time, I believe. And council actually chose to say, "No, 9:00 was late enough" because it was originally proposed to be 24 hours a day for the period of time that they were on.
Right.
And that was based on residents who did hear that council was having that discussion and had voiced concerns. So I think we recognize that it's a system that needs to be fine-tuned, and the concerns like yours are the ones that we need to be able to hear so that we can work them into the system.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much guys.
Thanks very much. Thanks for coming today. I guess, just coming out of this, I wonder, I have a question for Mr. Skavitch. Frank, can you remind council two parts? A, what our land use bylaw says that lots must have for parking when they're originally built? And B, if the city has any remedy to cause owners to have to fix up their parking if it's not being done properly? Mr. Skavitch?
Thank you Mayor Given. If I could ask you to pull up a map showing the area? In our residential zoning, we have various subdivision designs. As you can see, this one has lanes at the back. And the intent is that each property is to have two parking stalls. And you can see here, some do, some don't unfortunately. That was the original intent. Whether there's none, or as Jen mentioned about her neighbors at 9726, or her own, or this neighbor, or the one back here, they were intended to have two parking stalls at the back as per the land use plan. And unfortunately, they don't. We can certainly, you know, we have gone to areas where we've noticed this and sometimes given out information citing the fact that you do need two. We certainly did this last year with a number of owners on various of the streets with the narrower lots that were concerned about parking and that they did have, and were supposed to have, two stalls at the back. Many only had one or none. And that does lead to issues because they're parking in the front consequently. Jen is right, this parking ban went on the Friday, the 16th, and we took it off on the 26th. And we're working with the whole process. This year will be a trial basis. We're going to look at various things, even towards next snowfall event that we've learned from this one. Maybe staggering and sequential when we actually put bands on versus on a global, citywide. So things like that, we are certainly be looking at.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And Frank, just for that second piece of the question, does the city have any remedy to landowners that have sort of, over the years, somebody has covered in their parking stalls? Like, there's the one that Jen mentioned, there was the garden. Can we force the landowner to put in the stall? Do we have any ability to do that?
Ultimately, we do because the intent was that two stalls were to be provided. Of course, you have to change in ownership and such, so that things change on the lot. But the issue would be that they're supposed to have two stalls at the back. And I'd have to verify what could be exercised through the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks for the information. And then thanks very much Jen for coming today to speak. If you'd like to talk to administration about anything else, I'm sure Frank could make himself available at another time. Councillor Rice?
Agenda item 11, delegation business. I don't know where it passes, but I'll be referring it to Public Works tomorrow to review the hours of the ban, so...
Okay.
If these people are in, if it passes and they want to come tomorrow, they'll have another opportunity.
Sure.
I don't know if she heard that. Okay.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. And yeah, councillor Rice, you're correct. We do deal with delegation business generally at the end of our agenda, but considering we had somebody here tonight and to force them to sit through the entire agenda, it was a little bit difficult. Okay, so if there was nothing else on this item, then I would look to the crowd to see if there's anybody else that wanted to come forward to address council. It doesn't look like we're going to have anybody else that's going to come forward tonight. And so we'll move on from the delegation portion of our agenda into public hearings, of which we have none, and into unfinished business. And that's bylaw C 1261, emergency response fees and charges. So we're looking for a second and third reading. We had first reading of this bylaw last time. Councillor Rice?
My question is for the intergovernmental services director. I was not present for first reading. Am I permitted to take part in second and third reading? Thank you.
Thanks very much. So councillor Rice, just clarifying, I believe it would only be in public hearings where that would be a concern, not in first and second, for second and third reading of bylaws. So we'd look for a motion for second reading of the attached bylaw. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you Mayor Given. I'll move council give bylaw C 1261, second reading.
Thanks very much councillor Gustafson. So this is a motion for second reading on a bylaw that essentially outlines the fees and charges for emergency response that City of Grand Prairie would charge around a fire. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, so I'd look for a motion for third reading of bylaw C 1261. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you Mayor Given. I'll move that council give bylaw C 1261, third reading.
Thanks very much councillor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that finishes our unfinished business. And we move into reports, of which we had none tonight, and into committee business. And we'd start with the Community Development Committee meeting of November 15th, 2011. And councillor Crokin, I believe you're going to handle that set of minutes for us?
Thanks Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held November 15th, 2011.
Thanks very much councillor Crokin. Any discussion or debate on those minutes? Anyone note any errors or omissions? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Crokin, was there anything that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yes, thanks Mayor Given. We had Sandalack and Associates doing a presentation to us on the parks and Open Spaces master plan. It was quite a lengthy little discussion, and they showed the map of even the annexed, proposed annexed areas. But they will be coming back with a more precise plan at a later Community Development meeting. And the other item I'd just like to highlight is that we're, we are also going to be having, administration's coming back with another group award outside of the George Repka Award to recognize volunteer services and individual award in the City of Grand Prairie. So that'll be coming back at a subsequent Community Development meeting. And that was everything.
Thanks very much councillor Crokin. I see councillor McLean maybe with a question, or is this on the... Yep.
Councillor Crokin? Thank you Mayor Given. On the mall racers, they're asking for a five-year, because I think before it was one year. They had to come to committee and, you know, go through a bunch of stuff. So they're asking for five years. Is that correct councillor Crokin?
Yes, thanks councillor McLean. I do believe it has gone back to administration, and I would ask Director Roth to just bring us up to that.
Your honour?
Your worship, their current lease is still active. They still have a one-year lease. And administration is aware that as their lease draws a little bit closer to the end, we're certainly prepared to enter into those negotiations on looking at extending the length of time.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Roth. Thanks very much councillor Crokin and councillor McLean. So we'd move on to the Environment Committee meeting from November 21st. And councillor McLean, I think you handled that one as acting chair?
Thank you Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Environment Committee meeting held November 23rd, 2011.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Anyone have any notes on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor McLean, was there anything you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yes, thank you Mayor Given. March 10th is going to be Baldwater Free Day. And what I found about this is pretty interesting. They have fountain waters that go into schools, and they're hoping that new ones that they bring will have a fixture to fill up a water bottle, so you're not just going to buy a water bottle. And another thing I asked at the committee as well is, City Hall has no water coolers, which I found kind of a little shocking, but anyways, that was one thing that was brought up. It was quite interesting.
Okay, thanks very much councillor McLean. So we move on from the Environment Committee to the General Government Services Committee. Councillor Radburn, I believe that was you?
Thank you Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting held November 22nd, 2011.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. Any discussion on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you. I have a number of motions tonight. We'll start with, I would move the council approve the award of a seven-year contract to Telus for fiber managed services in the amount of $22,110 per month excluding GST. Telus has been the provider since, I guess, way back when? When the city became progressive in terms of fiber and technology? They've had two five-year contracts and a seven-year contract, so this would be the second seven-year contract. The staff and men did a market evaluation where they talked to senior executives, other potential providers, did some checking, and this number is more than competitive. In terms of changes, they deleted, delighted, they deleted three Aqua Terra sites, but we added two new city sites and added capacity. We currently pay $23,579, so there's a little, this is a little lower. They've been a good service provider, and we're finding that it's a very competitive bid, so that provides a context to this motion, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much councillor Radburn. I see a question open for discussion and debate. Councillor Rice?
So, being a techno peasant, so this is like our internet service provider to all of our facilities. Is that what that is?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'd call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councillor Radburn, you had a second part there?
Second part of this, I would move that council approve increases to the ITS department budget by $34,768 per year from 2012 to 2014. This was passed by a majority of committee. Basically, the background and context of this is, as I'm...
Basically, the background and context of this is, as, as I'm quoting from the report, the operational budget that council looked at was calculated without current information. Based on technical requirements, further details on the wireless project and current market info, budget increases are requested. That was really the explanation. I don't know if, if our Director of Corporate Services has anything to add to that. Ken?
Mr. Anderson?
No, Mayor Given, I have nothing to add.
Oh, never mind then. There we go. Counselor, I do see some people.
So I did.
Yeah, well done. I see a few in the queue. Counselor Rice?
I'm not supporting this. I'm not prepared to spend five days of my life sitting here wrestling over budgets where we almost got down to paper clips for someone to do an end run around us a week later. So, you know, I'm, I'm sorry. It's not a large amount of money when you take in their total budget was, and maybe Mr. Anderson could help me out, but we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, so I'm sure this can be absorbed.
Okay, thanks very much. Mr. Anderson, did you have some detail for us there?
Well, they do have a significant budget, and I don't believe it would be an issue to absorb it.
Okay, okay, thanks very much. Counselor McLean?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Given. Questions to Counselor Radburn, and I'm kind of leaning towards Counselor Rice as well. This came out after the fact, which, for whatever reason, but there's some reserves being closed off and moved over, and one of them is 326 Information Technology Reserve, which has $100,000 in it. And this would probably fit in that $100,000 range, and I don't know why it's not being used for this. Maybe Ken can speak to that, or we can maybe make an amendment, because I am on Counselor Rice's opinion, after the budget fact, we should, should be looking at something else.
Mr. Anderson, do you want to speak to the appropriateness, I suppose, or the potential of using that reserve, that source?
We usually don't use reserves for ongoing expenditures, and this would be an ongoing expenditure. It certainly would cover off a three-year period. However, my recommendation would be to avoid reserves for ongoing expenditures.
Okay, okay, thanks very much, Mr. Anderson. Okay, any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. I need one more counsel, thank you. And that motion carries. And we would move on to nine point three point two, fiscal sustainability model reserve review. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move counsel receive the detailed analysis of the city's reserve accounts for information and remove the following policies. And I, well, I guess I should read them, Jen. Three thirty-seven geographic information systems, GIS reserve, three twenty-six information technology reserve, three twenty engineering fund and reserve management, three twenty-eight transit reserve, three thirty-six redevelopment levy reserve, three thirty-three urban park reserve, three forty-one aquatic center reserve, three twenty-nine land equalization. This was about forty-five minute discussion, this, the rest of this, I guess this, these recommendations. I will try to be, give you the short and dirty as best I can. These, we're removing these policies, or recommending that we remove these policies because all of these reserves are being collapsed. All right, there are, there are other uses in the capital plan or, and, and then being collapsed, because these reserves are all being collapsed into future expenditure reserve or the financial stabilization reserve. Many of these reserves were established and were used to cover operating deficits or capital projects. Over the number of years, we're not getting operating deficits, and one might argue that we shouldn't have reserves for operating deficits. And so really, that's, that's the bottom line. Some of the capital things are being put into future expenditures, which is pretty well capital. Some is going to fleet, and then the rest into financial stabilization. But at the end of the day, these policies are being recommended to remove because we're collapsing or getting rid of these reserves.
Okay, thanks very much Counselor Radburn. Open for discussion and debate. Any questions or comments on the first portion of Counselor Radburn's reserves motion? Seeing, Counselor Wong?
Sure, I just wanted to say that I support the motion. I believe that having a number of reserves that still require council approval before the money gets spent anyway, it's kind of redundant. In, in the case where we collapse these reserves and move the money into the other reserves, I think it just, it eliminates a lot of confusion in terms of whether or not one department has ownership over a reserve. The financial stabilization reserve, for example, is a nice general fund, and any of the departments that were requesting additional funding for the year could come back and could still be allocated out of any of the remaining reserves.
Thanks very much Counselor Wong. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn, I think you had a little bit more to go.
Carry on. I will just note that there is one other reserve that's being collapsed, that's the paving levy reserve, but there's no policy in existence, so obviously we didn't have to delete a policy. So, next one, I move that council revise the following policies as attached. Three forty-two RCMP detachment reserve, three twenty-seven fire department equipment replacement and business initiatives reserve, three twenty-one fleet management system reserve, seven oh one fleet management system, three thirty-eight financial stabilization reserve. I'm just going to, I'm just going to try to give you the essence of the changes in these policies as, as I guess shared with the administration. On the RCMP detachment reserve, typically, there has been, the budget has been, has been based on a four-member vacancy each year. Those of us who are protective service will know that typically there's been seven or eight in terms of coming and going, and so don't have a full complement. So they have, they have had a four-member, they've been based on a four-member vacancy. So this reserve has been revised to include a maximum amount to cover two full-time RCMP members. That gives you a little bit of flexibility if indeed we have less than the four member, right? Typical year. The fire department equipment replacement out of that one now covers equipment replacement only with limits of five to 10% of operational budgets. The fleet management system reserve now includes transit buses and RCMP vehicles, and a minimum is, is the estimated cost of replacing the fleet over a three-year period, and the maximum is 1.5 times that. So that's between 5.5 and 8.2 million. The financial stabilization reserve now has been changed to a minimum to be 10% of current operational budget. In 2011, that was 11,696, I believe. So we're, yeah.
I think, I think that's millions.
Eleven million, yeah. Boy, we'd be in trouble, eh?
Around an hour.
That's right. So eleven million. So that gives you the essence of the, some of the changes to, in the revisions to the policy.
Thanks very much Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate, questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just, just to give you a little bit of, just to finish up the last one, we are preserving the cemetery reserve, the transportation levy reserve, the winter stabilization reserve, the public reserve, public housing reserve, future expenditure reserve, and the financial stabilization reserve. So there still are reserves available. And finally, I would move council approve the funding transfers and the, and 2012, 2014 capital plan changes. This just, I guess incorporates the recommendations in the report and integrates it with the decisions that council made during budget deliberations.
Thanks Counselor Radburn. And just, just for clarity, the budget discussion that council did utilized in different places, some of these reserves, and in our budget document, it would have said, for example, money to become, to come from the GIS geographic information reserve. This motion basically says the GIS reserve doesn't exist anymore, the money will actually be coming from whichever reserve that money went into. So basically, kind of a housekeeping item.
Yep.
Ensures that the plan, capital plan is in alignment with the reserves that we actually have in place. Any other discussion or debate? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Counselor Radburn, I think on the cemetery reserve, they're talking about doing a cap, and, and right now they think the amount that they have or the amount they anticipate that maintain the cemetery efforts closed is maybe insufficient. So I think there might be coming back to his administration how much more they might need, so eventually that 170,000 a year will be going elsewhere. So is there indication how soon that's going to happen?
No, administration didn't. It is on the radar, though, and as you, you were at the meeting, and you are fully aware of, that administration will be looking at that in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Radburn, thanks for handling that piece of business. I know you have one more, but I think that's a very positive change that administration brought forward, reducing the number of reserves improves clarity for the public as well as for council. It can be very difficult to understand all these special purpose reserves when ultimately the use of any of them is up to council for what we chose to use it for. So good work to the committee and administration. Thank you very much for bringing that forward. Counselor Radburn, sorry?
Thank you. And I just, I'll comment, this is part of the fiscal sustainability model. This was one of the actions reviewing the reserve balances. So I think that priority of council, this is one way it was, I guess, operationalized. Finally, I would move, I would move council give first reading to borrowing bylaw C-1263. In terms of, shall I give the context now or wait for second reading, Mayor Given?
Let's do second reading.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a first reading of bio, temporary borrowing bylaw C-1263. We'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries. Carry on, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you. I move council give second reading to borrowing bylaw C-1263.
Sharon, if you'd like to introduce it?
Thank you. Two million dollar line of credit was established in 1998 to meet temporary cash deficiencies due to investing activities. Requiring annual renewal minimizes the risk of a timing issue. This has been rarely used and will only be used temporarily to manage cash flows. So this is a general practice that we look to do each year, just to cover those cases where there might be a cash deficiency.
Okay, thanks very much Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion for second reading? Questions or comments? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we, we have third reading of borrowing bylaw C-1263.
Okay, so this is a motion to have third reading. A motion to have third reading on the same night must be unanimous, otherwise the borrowing bylaw would come back at a future council meeting. So I'll call for the votes. Thank you. And that motion carries, so we can have third reading, third reading here tonight. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you. Therefore, Mayor Given, I would move council give third reading to borrowing bylaw C-1263.
Thank you very much. Counselor Radburn, any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And thank you. And that motion carries as well. Counselor Radburn, was there anything else to highlight in that set of minutes? Did you get it all?
Just two, thank you, yeah. Two quick other items. We did receive the 2011 citizen satisfaction survey report that outlined some action plans, including measures, which was very informative. And we've directed administration to create a section on the city website for citizen, for citizens to monitor progress, and they are going to provide a six-month update with respect to how we are doing relative to those measures. And the other one was, another part of council party was looking at a program review or program audits, and we received a, an update that that work is in progress, it is going to corporate leadership team and then to committee. So good to see again another council priority that staff are working diligently on, and we're looking forward to the results of their work. Thank you.
Thanks very much Counselor Radburn. Any questions, comments for Counselor Radburn? Seeing none, then we're finished with our committee business and on to correspondence, of which we had none tonight. Delegation business, we did have one delegation that came to council. I see Counselor Rice in the queue to deal with that.
I move that we receive the presentation from Ms. Cochran for information.
Okay, so a motion to receive for information?
Yep.
Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you.
And I'd like to make a further motion. I'd like to.
That motion carries?
I'd like to move that we refer the matter of parking ban times to the Public Works Committee, perhaps for tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, thanks very much Counselor Radburn, so.
No, I'm not Radburn.
Oh, sorry.
I have more hair.
Anyhow, so before that goes anywhere else, we'll, thank you very much Counselor Rice. So that motion is in order. A motion to refer to the Public Works Committee meeting for tomorrow. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Counselor Rice, would this be pertaining to the bus routes or to all of them in the city?
Counselor Rice, you just.
I think we'll talk about it and decide how, how the scope of the review once we're at Public Works tomorrow.
Okay, thanks very much Counselor Rice. Any further discussion or debate? I won't be supporting the motion, Counselor Rice. I believe that the feedback that we received was, will be very helpful. I think at this point, though, we're in the middle of a winter season, and I think we, we knew that it was going to be difficult. I think we need to go through the season, and then based on the feedback that we receive, look and make some changes at the end of season. I certainly appreciate the feedback from residents, but I just feel that administration needs to be removing the snow off the roads, not writing reports for us at committee meetings. Won't be supporting the motion. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you very much. And that motion carries. So that's dealt with our delegation business. I don't believe we had any notices of motion. And we'd move into council member reports, of which we had two that folks let us know that they had, and we'll start with the Grand Spirit Foundation. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just reporting on the semi-annual board meeting held November 25th in Spirit River. Five, I guess, highlights. One, we did approve a bylaw change where we increased the management committee membership by one. Management committee now has nine members, the five, I guess, top requisition municipalities plus Spirit River plus three at large. Richard Harp and Lauren Radburn were elected as chair and vice chair for this coming year. Audits for lodge accommodation standards were completed in all our senior lodge facilities, and the province has given to your licenses for all of our lodges based upon that, that audit. The agreement between Grand Spirit Foundation, the Heith and District Pioneer Home Society was approved, and so the Heith Lodge will now become a part of the Grand Spirit Foundation. And finally, the, our administration had an operational review that was very positive. There's only one mandatory compliance item that we dealt with FOIP, and so they've identified a, the CAO as the responsible person, not a committee of the board. There are other five or six advisory items that we are in the, in the process of working through and considering those suggestions. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much Counselor Radburn. Next was the Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum, and Counselor O'Toole, you had something for us?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Hot news off the press here, you might say. Told you I'd be giving you updates, so Matthew Gray Gubler is an actor in Los Angeles, plays on, on television show. He was not invited last year, but he took the, the ability to come down here uninvited and had a great time, and he has signed on for this year. And he will be bringing his friends. Those friends have not been determined yet, but like I said, Matthew did this on his own last year, but he's doing it again this year.
That's great news. I know, I know Counselor Rice will be very excited to hear that.
Oh, yeah, she'll be giggly, giggly, giggly all over that.
He also flew there, Canada, too. Tell him.
No, I know, I picked him up at midnight.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I've got for that.
Well, good to hear that, good to hear that the celebrities are already lining up to come back to the Pipestone Creek dinosaur bone bed, and great to see their support for the, the project. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. I don't believe there were any other council member reports from any of our agencies, boards, or commissions, so we'd move to council roundtable. And Counselor O'Toole, I see that you've got your book there. Why don't we start right there?
Sure. On the 16th, 17th, and 18th, I attended the budget review program, and it was a pretty three hard days, but we come through it. On the 18th in the evening, I attended the PACE 30-year celebration, and I'd like to really send, send out sincere thanks to Counselor Helen Rice for doing an awesome job as the[1791.76] out sincere thanks to Councilor Helen Rice for doing an awesome job as the emcee. Thirty years of PACE, it's phenomenal, all the projects that they look after in this town and the people that work for them. On the nineteenth, I attended the soft opening for the city employees at the multiplex. There was over four hundred people in the facility, and it looked like it wasn't even quarter full. And I did jump into the big pool. Did it? No, it didn't. You know, here I am bragging you up, and then you put me in a hole. Okay. The twenty-first, I attended the tender opening and rang bells at Superstore for the Salvation Army. No, I was inside. The twenty-second, I headed out to Edmonton to meet with the, some many government officials and ministers, including the premier. Went with a number of city councillors. Very encouraged on the comments made and the quality of time that was given to us. I want to thank the Wayne Drysdale and Mel Knight and their staff, as well as the city hall staff, to make this happen. It was incredible success. I think you'll hear some incredible stories here in the next couple of months from just our meeting with the ministers. Twenty-fifth, I attended the Crystal Center Farmers Market Craft Show. I was there on behalf of the Philip J. Curry Museum. Piles and piles of people down there, and we were selling T-shirts and memberships to the museum. On the twenty-sixth, I was not at the dentist, but the local dentist here in town, Access Dentistry just down the street, gave free dental work to the people in, that turned out, that qualified. And I think that's something that's, needs to be mentioned here. He did it last year. He had eighty clients or eighty patients. And I think they were looking for at least fifty or seventy, somewhere in that number this year. So hats off to the, the good heart of that dentist's office. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. And Councilor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Obviously, the three, three days of operational budget. November eighteenth, also attended a meeting with the Alberta Liberal leader Raj Sherman and a number of councillors. And in the evening, I went to the Prairie Gallery exhibit opening and reception. The exhibit was John Kissick, Nervous Decade. November nineteenth, I also attended the multiplex opening to staff and families. And I was fortunate and proud to be able to bring my dad to the facility. And we spent about an hour and a half, enjoyed, enjoyed it. Did a couple things together. Were in the field house, and he was very impressed with the facility. It is, it is a wow factor, there's no doubt. November twenty-second, went to Edmonton. Twenty-third, we had our, I guess, from seven forty-five till about five o'clock, we had meetings every half an hour or so, with a bit of a break to visit question period. I, the two comments that I would have, one, I concur with Councilor O'Toole in terms of thank you for those who hosted us and who made the arrangements. I also want to acknowledge and thank Mayor Given and staff for the briefing binder. I thought it was just very, very useful and provided the necessary information for all of us who attended. And the other thing that I'm really, that I took note of, I took a look at our, our council advocacy priorities that are listed in our strategic priorities chart. And we touched in one meeting or another, and actually, in some of them, two or three meetings, we touched all seven of those priorities. So I think in that sense, I guess we, we operationalized the direction of council during our meetings that day. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radburn. Councilor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Of course, I was here for the operational budget review. The following weekend, I attended the Festival Trees Way Out at the Tech Center. And on the twenty-second, I toured the legislature with some colleagues of mine here. It was very interesting and very positive information. And we were, we were well, we were well received there at the, at the council. Last time we met, we were, kind of went on a regional, regional request. And this time, it was a little bit selfish, but we all raised concerns about the city. And like my colleague said here before, we would like to hope, the hosting was very good from Wayne and Mel. And we are very close to following our strategic priorities chart. So, and I attended the Chamber Mixer as well downtown at celebrations. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Gustafson. Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I also, on sixteen, seventeen, eighteenth, was with the rest of council here. On the eighteenth, I also attended the meeting with Mr., with the Liberal leader Raj Sherman here at city hall. And later that evening, I attended the banquet, the thirty-year celebration. And as Councilor O'Toole had said, Councilor Rice did a terrific job of emceeing. And I think she's done all thirty of them. So that's pretty good for her. And again, two good days in Edmonton, the November twenty-second and twenty-third, where we were very pleased to be invited into question period. And then a number of people from Grand Prairie saw us get introduced by our MLA Wayne Drysdale, which was nice for us to wave back to the people in Grand Prairie, seeing us working overtime. And then there was a birthday on the, on the twenty-fourth. Oh, no, sorry, that was just a note there. Oh, that was mine. Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. That was everything for the two weeks. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councilor Crokin. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. November seventeenth, I attended the Festival of Trees Opening Gala. And just hats off to Cindy Park and the QE two foundation office for putting on yet another successful event out there. Eighteenth, attended the meeting with Dr. Raj Sherman here. Did the, took the kids and the kids' friends to the multiplex family swim thing. And the kids were thrilled with it. They absolutely loved the place. And I even tried the floor rider. So lots of fun. Also, on the nineteenth, I attended the Nighthawk Alpine Ski Team fundraiser. The Chamber Mixer on the twenty-fourth, at the celebrations downtown, the dress shop downtown. And once again, it looks like the Miller family has done a great job of renovating and, and running a great business down there. And then on the, also on the, later on, on the twenty-fourth, was back out at Nighthawk for the opening gala evening. And I'd like to wish Jonathan and Dwayne out there best of luck for a good ski season this year. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. Councilor Rice?
You should have taken Alderman Crokin with you on the twenty-fourth. He could have pretended it was his birthday party. Yeah. I too attended the budget session and the PACE thirty-year celebration. Excellent. And, and an organization that certainly adds to the quality of life in this community for many, many people. I attended the Alberta municipal district and counties conference one day as a municipal excellence juror, one day as a peer mentor for municipal politicians, attended a luncheon, which I was really pleased that the entire cabinet, including the premier, was there with the exception of the honorable Fred Horn, who had a previous commitment. So it was, it was very impressive. I'd like to advise council that on November the eighth, the lieutenant governor will be bestowing an award on Mr. John McGowan of the A U M A as outstanding CEO.
December?
December eighth.
December eighth.
December eighth. On December eighth, I will be having dinner at Government House with Mr. McGowan. I want to remind council, too, on December first, which is coming up on Thursday, the community village will be having a kickoff to Christmas with hot chocolate and children's activities. And the more activity that happens around the community village, the, certainly minimizes any concerns we may have heard in the past. So I urge all of you to attend that. That's it.
Great. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Wong?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Wednesday, November sixteenth to the eighteenth, I attended the budget discussions. On Saturday, November nineteenth, it was staff day at the multiplex. And administration took that opportunity to provide a dress rehearsal for their staff and onsite training, as well as the opportunity to test all the equipment there. I thought they did a fantastic job at running the facility as if it were in operation. And I think they'll be very well prepared for the soft opening on December fifth for members and the opening on December sixth for new and non-members. So everyone mark your calendars. I know that they don't want a flood of people attending, but I wouldn't mind a flood of people attending. I think that's such a fantastic facility. Yeah. Anyway, on Monday, November twenty-first, I was in McLennan for the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. It was an all-day meeting. We have several more of those before March, at which time most of our preliminary reports are finished. And then I'll be able to give you guys a really good report on what the status of the Watershed Alliance and their objectives are. On Wednesday, November twenty-third, I was with other council members and the mayor at the Alberta Legislature in Edmonton. And I just have to say that Mayor Given did such a great job leading the discussion with ten different provincial departments. And we should all be really proud of the way he represented us. As well, other council members that did attend also provided information to, to the different departments whenever it was appropriate. And staff provided excellent background information. For the most part, it was good to hear that the provincial goals aligned really closely with our own advocacy priorities. And I believe it was important for us to tell Grand Prairie's story and to ensure that those priorities make it into the provincial budget process. And I think that we were fairly successful in at least bending a few ears and getting some support out there. I also believe that A U M A advocacy is also, it ties in really nicely, too, because we get to provide a really unified message as we go forward. So, Councilor Rice, good job representing us on the A U M A level as well. And I just wanted to provide thank yous to MLA Drysdale, who helped set up those meetings, and for his presence during most of those meetings and support, as well as MLA Knight for his support and presence at those meetings.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Councilor McLean? Just gonna have to hit your microphone there.
Thank you, Mayor Given. On November fifteen, I helped Salvation Army at Superstore. Hoping to do about three or four more of these, helping them out. They're very short-staffed, they're volunteers. So be good to help out a little bit more. As well, on November sixteen, seventeen, eighteenth, I was at Operational Budget City Hall. Number eighteen, met with Raj Sherman at city hall. And then later that evening, had supper at Raj Sherman. On November nineteenth, I also attended the multiplex building with my family. It was considered a trading day, like Councilor Wong said. And there was things that even in the new building, it's not done yet. They don't have it. Speaking of the slides of green light, red light, stop, even in the kids' area, the slide goes right around and you can't see your kids. So I think there's things to be improved on, and that's why they have days like that, as well as handrails in some areas. But overall, it was fantastic building, but they used that for a trading day. And I think they'll be able to fix all those things. On November twenty-first, I co-chaired the environment committee meeting. And it was actually pretty, a pretty good meeting. And I mention it because I got to co-chair it. And Councilor Monroe was off south there getting the suntanned. And so anyways, and I like to say, I was glad the council went down to Edmonton and proof of being in the pudding, like Councilor O'Toole, hopefully in a couple months, because we do have election in the spring. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. So we'll move on. We have, as obviously council had, a number of council members mentioned the budget discussions. On Thursday, November seventeenth, I attended at the Salvation Army, where a number of our crime prevention team were there serving dinner. And I was there to make a proclamation regarding National Addictions Week. On Friday, November eighteenth, I was also with other members of council when we met with Dr. Raj Sherman from the Alberta Liberal Party. And later that evening, I was downtown at Bama Furniture for Vegas Night. I was there to hand out shirts to anybody who could beat me in a game of twenty-one. And thanks very much to the Downtown Association for sponsoring those one-of-a-kind Grand Prairie T-shirts. On Saturday, November nineteenth, I was also, took my family at the opportunity to go to the multiplex and test it out. The thing that struck me about the experience, aside from the professionalism of the staff and how ready everybody was, was the fact that the pools were hardly even used. There was at least one pool where I don't think there was anybody in it the entire time. And then the big pool, there was only a few people in it. And so even though there were, you know, four hundred people in there, there was still lots of room. So I think that was, that was very encouraging to me, because it isn't until you actually see it. The other thing that was also encouraging to me was the, the fact that I had always heard that the big pool was gonna be slightly cooler than the other pools. And after diving in there, it's just a swimming pool. It's not any cooler. It's not like you're swimming in the Arctic or anything like that. So that was one concern that I'd had. And I think for a lot of the community, that'll be the thing, is to actually get in and use it. After all these years of talking about it, people will be able to form their own impressions. Council members had mentioned the opportunity to go to the Alberta Legislature, and hopefully we'll see some return from that investment of time and resources to go down there. I'd like to thank the council members that attended. I'd like to thank the council members that stayed home and kept things in line for us here. I also attended, I think, actually, that's my list of events for the last couple of weeks. So thank you very much to council, and we'll call our meeting adjourned.